Good morning, everyone. Everyone, please rise.
Mr. Schirrmack?
So today, I'm happy to announce we have a veteran here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. From 1969 to 1972, U.S. Navy veteran Jim McHugh is going to lead us in the pledge. Also, Jim is also a mentor coordinator for our Veterans Court, so he's still a big help, and we appreciate you being here today.
We do. Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Veterans may hand salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thanks for your service. Entertain a motion for the reading of approval in the midst of last meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Another question? Favor?
Aye.
Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only.
Joan Hodawana at Scranton. Resolution 23-0212, the Tyler Amendment. I read through it. All I want to know is the bottom line. It looks like it goes up 70,000, goes down 201,000. What's the net impact of this amendment financially?
Thank you.
Well, I guess Dave will answer when he comes up, right?
Yeah, we'll answer that. Okay.
Do you want to answer now, Dave? Or do you think you can address that in your...
No.
Hi, I'm Diana Campbell. I am a candidate for County Commissioner, and I'm addressing the Commissioners on Resolution I have great concerns about taking out $42 million worth of debt right before an election as a candidate and a possible Commissioner in the coming months. I'm very concerned about this, and I hope that you really think through this carefully.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Proclamation presentation, 230227. Mr. Schirrmack?
Proclamation declaring the month of September 2023 to be Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month in Lackawanna County. Whereas suicide is the leading cause of death in the United States, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, one person dies by suicide every four hours, making it the second leading cause of death for ages 15 to 34, and the fourth leading cause of death from ages 35 to 54. And whereas nearly 5 million people in the United States have lost a loved one to suicide, and each member of our community is valued and irreplaceable, and is valued and irreplaceable. And talking openly about stress and psychological health builds trust, reduces barriers to care, and enables early intervention. And local and statewide suicide prevention efforts should be developed and encouraged to maximum extent possible. And whereas in the Lackawanna-Susquehanna Behavioral Health Intellectual Disability Early Intervention Program, works with community stakeholders to assure that citizens have access to mental health services and mental health crisis intervention to spread the message that help and resources are available. Whereas local and statewide suicide prevention efforts should be developed and encouraged to the maximum extent possible. Now therefore, we, Jerry Notary, Annie Debe Dominic, and Chris Schirrmack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim September 6, 2023, as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month in Lackawanna County. So I don't know if we have any, is there anybody here? Oh, okay. There you are. We have a little proclamation here. I can, Ricky, Ricky got the magic camera?
Would you like to say something about?
Yes, please.
On behalf of the Lackawanna-Susquehanna BHIDEI Program, along with Lackawanna County Suicide Prevention Alliance, we have just done tremendous work within the community. I think the biggest message we want to send to our individuals in Lackawanna County is that there is a 988 crisis suicide line, which we are going to be having flyers distributed through all the parks in Scranton, so, and in Lackawanna County parks. So I think the biggest message we want people to know is although that there may be a dark tunnel, there is a shed of light in there, and that's hope, and that there's help for these individuals, and that their lives matter. Thank you.
We just started a new hotline, correct?
Yes. It's a 988 through Sampson, the state. It's a suicide prevention crisis line, and all individuals have to do is dial 988, and what happens is they'll direct them to an individual to, as a crisis person, to deal with that.
There's some, that's 24 hours a day.
24 hours, 7 days a week.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for your help. You're a big part of our Suicide Prevention Alliance, which, you know, that's been a, it's been a great thing, and we've all stuck to it, and it's, you know, keeps everybody on the same page. So that's, it's a good program.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You should come up, we'll take a picture.
(laughing). (inaudible). Slide over this way.
Hi.
Hi. Everyone should smile.
Couple.
Sort of.
And that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Thank Commissioner Schirrmack. He serves on that panel and that board, and he's done a great job. Resolution 230226.
Approving the current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, 361875-362392, inclusive totaling $3,144,195.47. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $10,246,281.97. Adopted and regularly made, the Board of Commissioners held on September 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolution 230212.
Entering into an amended agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into an amended agreement with Tyler Technologies for County Land Record Offices. Adopted and regularly made, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. David Bolzoni. What's that? Tyler. You have a bunch.
Maybe you can answer Joan's question now, too, Dave.
All right, now I'll answer that question at conclusion. But with regard to the Tyler Amendment, the amendment was triggered based on the recent execution and forthcoming conversion of the tax software by the Single Tax Office. The software for the tax office was included in the Tyler contract originally. The conversion, therefore, triggered a renewal, an amendment to that contract for the final year. That final year would be August 1 through July 31 of next year. That would be year five of the existing contract. So the amendment was really required based on the trigger, which was the conversion of the Single Tax Office to the RBA, to the RBA system software. Keep in mind that the Tyler software was never really executed, so therefore, it made the amendment a possibility for conversion since the use of that software had not materialized over the life of the contract. Relatively complex, but ultimately, the amendment had to occur principally because of the change in the Single Tax Office to the RBA system software.
Thank you. All right. Anyone have any questions for Dave? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Let him finish, to answer Joan's question.
To answer that question, it's actually included in the amendment. So commencing August 1, the net total is reduced to, by $131,270. That's a reduction in the overall contract of 201,207 for the software fees to be removed, and an addition of $70,000 to the contract. Those fees are added pursuant to the amendment. So the reduction is based on the removal from the contract of the software cost for the Single Tax Office, for the Tax Claim Bureau, and for the Treasurer's Office. Those conversions had not happened. So the request that we had was, since those conversions did not materialize, they should be removed from the contract. Tyler agreed and complied. The 70,000 was basically input provided from Tyler based on communication software that's needed for the RBA systems in order to communicate with the Tyler Systems Software.
Anything else? Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution 230223.
Authorization or reimbursement of tax-exempt debt, whereas the County of Lackawanna intends to finance proceeds of one or more series of tax-exempt debt, a project consisting of all or any of the following: funding the design, acquisition, construction, renovation, improvement, and installation, furnishing, and equipping of improvements and/or additions to the county's facilities and properties, including but not limited to: street paving and improvements, bridge repairs and improvements, traffic control systems and equipment, flood mitigation projects, municipal building renovations and improvements, roof repairs and replacements, technology and information improvements, and equipment acquisition, energy savings projects, and the acquisition of municipal equipment, and to paying the costs and expenses of the issuance of the debt, whereas the county has determined that the funds have been or are to be advanced to pay expenditures or, or will be available only for a temporary period and is necessary to reimburse the county for expenditures with respect to the project from proceeds of tax-exempt borrowing represented by the debt. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners hereby declares the intent of the county as follows: the county reasonably expects to reimburse itself for original expenditures paid or to be paid by the county from general, from general funds of the county in connection with the project with the proceeds of the debt. This resolution constitutes the declaration of official intent intended to comply with the requirements of Section 1.150.2E of the United States Treasury Regulations as amended. Stevenson Lee, P.C., as bond counsel to the county for said project, is hereby directed and authorized to take any and all preliminary actions as may be necessary to carry out the purposes of this resolution prior to formal action by the Board regarding the authorization issuance of debt. PFM Financial Advisors, LLC, as financial advisor to the county for said project, is hereby directed and authorized to take any and all actions as may be necessary to carry out the purposes of this resolution prior to formal action by the Board regarding the structuring, marketing, and issuance of the debt, including but not limited to proceeding with the distribution of the request for proposals for purchase of the debt from financial institutions. This resolution shall become effective immediately. It's adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman.
I will summarize basically in two sentences from my memorandum. The purpose of the reimbursement resolution is to reimburse the county from debt proceeds for expenditures in support of the project for which debt is issued. Under federal regulations, the proceeds of bonds may be allocated to prior capital expenditures for a defined period of time after the expenditure is made, but only if a formal declaration, in this case, a resolution, is passed. Any more questions for Dave?
Hi, Commissioner. Dave, the original expenditures that are...
The original expenditures that are going to be reimbursed via this resolution, where's the money coming from to make those expenditures initially?
Well, you're reimbursing those expenditures from debt proceeds, so it would depend upon which tranche of debt that would actually come from.
I'm sorry, maybe I didn't, I might have misstated my question. The county's going to get reimbursed for those expenditures. Where's the money coming from initially for those expenditures?
Some of those expenditures may have already been authorized for projects that have been contemplated. So for example, the Commissioners authorized some work on a retaining wall. There may have been some preliminary costs associated with that that may have been expended already. That project is part of this comprehensive public works projects. So there are some. They would be, at this point, principally soft costs, which would be design or engineering. But for the most part, most of those projects have not been authorized, so therefore, the reimbursement is probably going to only be for a select few of those projects which may have already begun.
And those projects that have been begun, been begun, and were funded by the county initially, was that money allocated in our budget for 2023?
Some of it may have been, and some of it may not have been. So for example, the retaining wall was not included in the budget, but we were going to divert dollars from healthcare surplus in order to get the project started. So my intention would be not to have to divert any of those funds from healthcare surplus and use the reimbursement mechanism in order to fund it. With regard to some of the other projects, I'm not sure, but some of them have already begun in some of the planning phases. So those that have begun relative to the planning and design phase would have been started prior to this year. Some of those projects would have been included in the budget. I'd have to really look at a, at more of a detailed list as to what's been expended and whether the reimbursements could be authorized. Keep in mind, there's a defined timeframe, so expenditures that went back to the earlier part of the year could not be reimbursed from debt proceeds.
This reimbursement resolution only goes back six months? Is that correct?
It appears to me that's within 60 days.
Oh, 60 days.
Right.
So any expenditures prior to 60 days from this date are not reimbursable?
Right. If, if I'm correct, and I'm pretty sure it's 60 days. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions for Dave? I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. Question?
I mean, I, you know, we're throwing a lot of numbers around here. We're looking at borrowing $42 million, fixing things that, you know, have been kicked down the road and ignored. You know, and we're getting to the point, we're two months away from an election. You know, we could have, we could have three new Commissioners here next year that's going to be saddled with trying to figure out how to pay for all this stuff. I just, I just can't support trying to borrow all this money right now. You know, $42 million is almost, that's almost a third of our operating money right now. That's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money. And a part of the reason is because we don't have a fund to...
But I'm thinking that this should be some decisions that the next administration should be looking at, not something that they're going to get hammered with.
Right, but this is a decision that should have been made by the previous few...
Well, and I don't disagree. I know that we've been, you know, not only we got a worldwide pandemic thrown at us, but we've been, and we have this building that we're sitting in that cost us god knows how much money. You know, that was the start of this disaster.
It's certainly not a good building.
You know, you know, these, you know, the law firms are making a fortune off of this. The, it's just, this is just, I don't know. I don't think it's fair, and not only that, nobody's talking about it, but there's going to be, to pay this back, there's going to be a major tax increase. I'm going to tell you right now, I am not voting for a tax increase. That's not happening. Not happening. So how we're going to pay it back? Somebody better have a magic wand somewhere, because I don't have one. I can't support this. I don't want to, as a potential Commissioner coming in to the next administration, you know, this is, I don't know how we're going to pay for it. We need to balance our own budget. We need to, you know, we have a structural deficit that we just, we took a good shot at it last year, and I thought we did a very good job of getting a balanced budget. Matter of fact, we had $100,000 surplus. I think we need to take a hard look at the budget again. I haven't seen a preliminary budget yet for this year, or for next year, which I will go over with a magnifying glass. But I know there's room for departments to save money. I don't know what our deficit's going to be this year, but it could be, it could be a dollar, it could be 5 million. I have no clue. So until I see that, you know, but to start funding projects and fixing things and spending money that we don't have, I can't support that. I just can't, and I don't want to be saddled with it as a new Commissioner coming in next year.
Mr. Bolzoni, any comments on that?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I just want to say that with regard to the balanced budget, last year, that was the result of the hard work of Dave Bolzoni. We hired him for a reason. He recommends this. We can't stop governing because an election is in the near future.
This is taxpayer dollars that...
Can I finish?
Taxpayer dollars that we are spending, and I refuse to waste taxpayer dollars, and I am not...
This is all taxpayer dollars.
But you also, you're the one who voted...
And I was a big part of the savings that we did last year. My team and I worked tirelessly and came up with over $5 million worth of savings.
But you also raised taxes in the first year that you were...
Because we were saddled with initial...
But my point being is that, you know, everybody has their own opinion on these, on issues, and I respect Jerry's opinions, I respect Chris's opinions, but we hired a CFO for a reason. He's very capable. He came in, in the middle of budgets, towards the end of the budget season last, last year, and still did amazing with what he had and the time that he had. He believes this is within, is in the best interest of the county. And moving forward, the new administration, we're not doing anything to put them at a disadvantage. If anything, this will hopefully improve things so that when they come in, they will be, the county will be in a better position than what we're in now.
When I was in, when I was in business, we had a CFO, and the CFO was our numbers guy, and he told us the way it was and his opinions, but it was our decision as business owners to make the correct decisions. You know, sure, I could go in and raise shop rates and charge more for repairs and raise prices on my cars. I could do, I could have done that, but you can't do that. You put yourself out of business. So, and I respect what Dave is doing. He does a great job, but it's up to the Commissioners to make the final decision, and his guidance will help me make my decision. However, nobody can tell me, and I proved it last year, that $150 million operating budget, there's money to be saved somewhere in that budget, and that's what I would be focused on. Not spending more money, borrowing more money. We're going to borrow more money. We're going to eliminate, or we're going to refinance two bond issues that were out there. What were the rates? Now, the rates have skyrocketed, so now we're looking at more expensive money to borrow. So, you know, I, I'm sorry, I can't support it. I don't want to be left with it.
I've been preaching for the last three years that expenses need to be cut, but that's a subject for a different day.
No, that's a subject for today.
Okay. Expenses need to be cut, and, you know, there have been many times where I've made recommendations to cut expenses, and I can't get support for it. So in the meantime, we have to, you know, we have to do something. We need to follow what our CFO states if within, if he's making an opinion that's within reason and that will, you know, be in the, in the, in the best interest of our residents, and I believe that that is what he's doing. I'll let him comment, but I vote yea. I'm second.
Mr. Bolzoni?
Well, since we kind of got ahead of ourselves, because I was addressing the reimbursement resolution, but in that regard, for the benefit of everyone here, maybe I could read through my summary on the proposed capital improvements project, and then this way, that might fill in some of the gaps. What I will say to each of you is just understand, I have the utmost respect for all three of you, or anyone who sits in, in those seats. Very difficult task. I respect your opinions greatly. My job is to try and provide solutions. That's what I'm doing, and as was pointed out, it's really up to the Board to decide whether you believe this is the correct solution for the problem. But just know that there are problems, and this prospective solution addresses quite a few of those. With regard to my summary, I'll read through it for you. The Board has requested to authorize further action and approval of a comprehensive capital projects initiative, which includes two public works, 22 public works components, and an expansive energy savings project encompassing most county facilities. The initiative also includes the replacement of the prison roof, Phase 1 of a multi-phase courthouse renovation and reconstruction project. You have had an opportunity to review the accompanying material at prior work sessions, and we had gotten into some very lengthy discussions relative to the merits of the project at the prior work sessions. What you will notice is that most, if not all, of the projects can really be categorized as critical need. Public Works is divided into three groups. Projects that would be supported directly by the registration fee, which includes two bridges, the G.C. Smith Road Bridge and the Ash Gap Road Bridge. Those that are grant-supported, and that's segmented because we, there was a reliance on the bipartisan infrastructure law grant. The county had applied for that grant. It did not make it through the first round. Those projects are included in the, in the summary, but they're also grant-supported, so they're going to rely on the approval at some point in the future of that grant. But the grant also comes with a match. The county would be responsible for a match of $1,641,700. That has to be funded somehow. Other projects which qualify for the registration fee, and those that don't qualify for use of the registration fee. That includes the retaining walls. That also includes the dam reconstruction project. Those projects all have some level of need, in some cases, critical need. They have to be addressed in the very near future. Public Works include many bridges which need repair. Some are in the position where we risk having closure of those bridges. Those have to be addressed. Facilities projects have two components: the energy savings encompassing most county facilities, a new prison roof, which absolutely has to be taken care of, and Phase 1 of the courthouse project. These projects address useful life issues in most, if not all, of those facilities, and also include a much-needed improvement to the children's library. Repayment, the principal funding mechanism will be debt. Approximately $42,970,000 principally bonds, supported to some extent by additional funding from ARPA funds, from healthcare surplus funds, and grant reimbursements from the Commonwealth. Grant funding is a fluid process, so in addition to dollars that we hope to secure at some point through the BIL grant and possibly a RACE grant, which wasn't factored into the structure of this project, the county was recently notified that it could secure a $1.4 million multimodal grant. That also has to get factored in. I used a certain figure for ARPA dollars. That certainly can be increased, and with deference to Commissioner Schirrmack, I don't necessarily agree that we're looking at a massive tax increase supporting this project. There was a lot of thought put into the structure to create a smoothing mechanism so that the increase could be manageable, and we all recognize circumstances that the county is in right now. We faced a preliminary deficit going into this year's budget, and we very likely will face a preliminary deficit going into next year's budget. Approximately $900,000 annually in registration fee revenue is going to be levered also to support debt service, and as I pointed out before, those are projects which qualify for the use of the registration fee. So the projection includes a component of an allocation of $2 million in ARPA funds. Certainly, that dollar amount can be increased, and if that dollar amount is increased, that has an impact on total project costs that would be funded by debt. So again, I point out, it's a relatively fluid process, but I'm trying to move this forward because I think these projects really need to be addressed. There was a lot of thought put into the structure to create a smoothing mechanism so that the increase could be manageable, and we all recognize circumstances that the county is in right now. We faced a preliminary deficit going into this year's budget, and we very likely will face a preliminary deficit going into next year's budget. Approximately $900,000 annually in registration fee revenue is going to be levered also to support debt service, and as I pointed out before, those are projects which qualify for the use of the registration fee. So the projection includes a component of an allocation of $2 million in ARPA funds. Certainly that dollar amount can be increased, and if that dollar amount is increased, that has an impact on total project costs that would be funded by debt. So again, I point out it's a relatively fluid process, but I'm trying to move this forward because I think these projects really need to be addressed.
So what you're saying, Dave, is basically that going forward, this is where the payments for the bond issue would, would, would come from?
To, to some extent. So again, registration fee revenue is going to support the repayment of debt service, but only on the debt that's issued for those projects which qualify for the use of registration fee. Other projects are going to be supported by revenue that's generated from the general fund.
Well, I mean, I get critical repairs and I, bridges that are in, need a critical repair, the prison roof. I mean, I've never been up on the roof. It, maybe it's, maybe it doesn't need to be replaced. Maybe it could be repaired and last a couple of years. I have no idea. Remodeling the courthouse, is that a critical need? I don't think so. You know, if the heating system goes down, that's a critical repair. If an AC unit goes down, that's a critical repair. A wall collapse, critical repair. I mean, those things, I get it, but, you know, not all these things are critical needs and critical repairs.
I guess I'll close by saying, these are all county assets. Ultimately, it's the responsibility of us to maintain those assets appropriately, and I know that maybe in some cases, the maintenance on those assets may have been deferred, but I think deferral of maintenance and deferral of repairs only leads at some point to a larger cost that's associated with trying to manage the county facilities.
Thank you.
Commissioners, just to wrangle this back in quickly, we're not voting today on the $42 million project. This is just a resolution authorizing reimbursement from tax-exempt debt, so we're not authorizing the 42 million today.
But, but you are authorizing the employment of Stevens and Lee as bond counsel, and somebody to act as a financial advisor, and they're going to be paid whether the $42 million bond issue goes through or not, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Hold on. We already paid them.
The reimbursement resolution is separate, okay? Obviously, the reimbursement resolution comes into play if you wind up issuing the debt. Basically, what is being asked of the board today is to allow the county to proceed with the debt issuance. So ultimately, the approval comes down to the authorization or approval of the respective debt ordinances that would support the various components of the projects, but today, it's really just an authorization to proceed.
It does not cost us any money, and it, it is time-sensitive.
I, I would certainly agree that there is some time sensitivity to this. Otherwise, we would not have spent the last seven, eight, nine months putting this together.
Okay. All right.
Does, does this resolution retain the services of bond counsel and financial advisors?
No, we already have a financial advisor in-
All right, we have, we have a motion, we had questions, we answered them.
When was that voted on? Did I miss that meeting?
DFM has been our financial advisor.
And who's been our bond counsel? Who's been our-
Stevens and Lee has been our bond counsel.
And were they hired for this project, or are they just-
They've been our bond counsel. They've been our bond counsel for 12 years.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second on the question. All in favor?
Did you second it?
I did.
Okay. Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 230213.
Entering into an agreement with eCivis, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an eCivis subscription and service agreement for an outlined centralized grant accounting service, term to commence immediately and expire March 31, 2024, adopted at the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September 6, 2023. Once again, to speak upon that is our CFO, Dave Bolzoni. E-Civis.
Okay, well, I wasn't aware that I'd be speaking on eCivis, but in any event, eCivis is the existing grant platform that is used by the county. It's used by the, the Office of Economic Community Development for all grant applications.
All right. Anyone else, anyone have any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Chris?
Yeah, aye.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 230214.
Entering into a master services and consulting agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a master services and consulting agreement with Booz Allen Hamilton Incorporated and Cipriani and Warner P.C. for technical expertise in cyber consulting services, including counsel, proactive cybersecurity services, assessments, remediations, managed security services, and process analysis and documentation, digital forensics, and cyber incident response services and other related consulting services for one year, agreement to commence immediately, adopted at the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September 6, 2023. And finally, once more, here is Mr. Bolzoni.
This contract was advanced by our information technology department, basically to, to support existing cyber technology services that we have in place. I think we're all aware at this point in time that cybersecurity has become a, a very significant problem that, that certainly needs to be addressed. This is just another support mechanism to allow us to continue to advance our ability to constantly monitor against fraudulent activity relative to the, the operation of the county.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Second question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230215.
Approving a magistrate lease agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the lease agreement with the Housing Authority of Lackawanna County for the use of the Magisterial District Judge's office at 2012 West Pine Street Dunmore. Term of lease shall be six years, beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2029, and with the monthly rent to cost $2,100 for the first three years. Adopted at the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September 6, 2023. Here to speak upon that, Mr. Chairman, is our General Counsel, Mr. Donald Frederickson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Before you this morning is an extension on our lease agreement for the Dunmore magistrate's office. It's going to run for six years, which is commensurate with the term of the magistrate. He's up for reelection this year, and he'll serve for the next six years. This will carry him through his term. The first three years, the rent remains unchanged at $2,100 a month, and then for year three, four, year four, five, and six, it increases 3% each year.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230216.
Approving the juvenile probation grant. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Juvenile Court Judge's Commission Grant Fiscal Year 23 through 24 for the Department of Juvenile Probation in the amount of $247,306, adopted at the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September 6, 2023. Here to speak upon that is Deputy Chief Probation Officer of Juvenile Probation, Ms. Melissa Pavlosky.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Since July 3, since July 2013, the Lackawanna County Juvenile Probation Department has participated in the Juvenile Court Justices Commission Service Grant. This grant assists our department with the implementation and development of the Juvenile Justice System Enhancement Strategies, otherwise known as the JJSES. The JJSES is a statewide approach to develop a unified level of service for youthful offenders, build stronger relationships with families, schools, and community-based service providers. This innovative approach helps reduce recidivism and uses evidence-based practices when treating juveniles while protecting the community. These strategies have been utilized for the past several years and will continue to improve the delivery of services at no additional expense to our department or the county. The grant is in the amount of $247,306.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 230217.
Approving the local share account grant submissions, whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County, and whereas Lackawanna County is submitting grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the Monroe County Local Share Grant Program on behalf of various agencies as detailed, the Victorella Fury Society, $169,400 for a roof replacement, VFW Post 5544 in Jessup, $87,150 for roofing and kitchen equipment, Holy Rosary Basketball Association, $200,000 for a roof replacement, VFW Post 665 Dixon City, $126,000 for the purchase of property, Justice Volunteer Fire Company, $217,560 for building renovations in multiple projects, the VFW Post 4712 Walter Pasega Memorial in German, $150,000, $50,000 for building renovation and expansion project, the American Ukrainian Veterans Association, $100,000 for regrading landscaping with concrete installation and kitchen renovation, the West Grant Junior Invaders for $147,000, ready construction of their facility bathrooms, the Dunmore Missy League, $191,625 for softball field lighting, Lackawanna Historical Society, $146,736 for the Caitlin House Accessibility Improvement and Storm Water Mitigation Plan. This grant area foundation, community foundations for $131,250 for renovations to the back entrance of the Century Club, making it ADA, and the Eagle McClure Host Company, $118,997 for paving exterior and exterior lighting. Whereas Lackawanna County authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Monroe County Local Share Account Grants, and now therefore be it resolved, on the sixth day of September 2023, that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby authorize the submission of these applications to the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program on behalf of the above-named entities and their respective projects, adopted at the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Economic Development Grants Manager, Ms. Sandy Upshinsky.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. This resolution is the first, there will be another, of a collection of projects that are applying through us as an eligible entity for local share Monroe County funds. It doesn't guarantee their funding, but it does guarantee that we can help support their projects in applying on their behalf.
Thank you. And part of what you do, Sandy, is also the, the grants that you search and find all over the world, actually, to support many projects like this, not necessarily an LSA one. Part of that is through eCivics.
That is correct.
Which is a program that, you know, you came to us with years ago, and it's, it worked out really well, hasn't it?
Yes. It contains possibilities for not only state funding mechanisms, but also federal and foundation.
Okay, thank you. And this has nothing, that has nothing to do with this, but since we're talking about grants, I thought I'd mention that. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 230220.
Approving the Area Agency on Aging Service Agreements, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Area Agency on Aging Service Agreements for the Fiscal Years 23 through 26 with COLTS and the Jewish Community Center, adopted at the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Area Agency on Aging Director, Ms. Sarah McDonald.
Good morning.
Good morning.
These are three-year agreements that are mandated agreements that we need to have, that are funded by the Department of Aging through Black Grant Funding. COLTS provides the shared ride transportation services to senior centers, medical appointments, social service agencies, adult daily living centers, grocery stores, and pharmacies for individuals age 65 and older. We estimate they do about 80,000 rides a year, and the budget that we get from the state, we allocate to COLTS at $300,250.
Thank you.
And then the Jewish Community Center is another one of our contracted senior activity providers. The goal of this contract is to reduce isolation, disease, and promote health. They offer a variety of services, like to improve health and wellness, including cardio classes, senior yoga, zumba, water exercise, waterworks, aqua toning, memory, and they have a memory cafe as well.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Sarah?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230221.
Approving the professional service agreement for the, the AAA. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the professional service agreement for the Area Agency on Aging with Information Age Technologies Incorporated for the Copilot Touchscreen System Technical Support and Upgrades to the following nine senior center sites, the Hillside, Healthy Aging Campus in Clark Summit, the Fallbrook Healthy Aging Campus in Carbonell, the Dunmore Activity Hub and Cafe in Dunmore, the Mid Valley Active Adult Community Center in Jessup, the Jewish Community Center, Senior Center in Scranton, the Jefferson Township Center in Jefferson Township, Taylor Senior Center in Taylor, the Troop Senior Center in Troop, and the Westside Active Adult Community Center in Scranton. The agreement shall be effective as July 1, 2023, and run through June 30, 2024, with a cost not to exceed $14,520, adopted at the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Ms., or Director McDonald.
Our copilot annual subscription helps our office report all the data that's needed. It's collected in all of our senior centers, and it reports like how often they're being used, how many meals are being serviced, how many activities are completing, and it helps us make budgetary decisions each year and report that information to the state to ensure that we get appropriately funded for the years to come.
You've been doing a great job, Sarah. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230222.
Approving the annual service agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the annual service agreement with the Area Agency on Aging with CScreen for assessment and monitoring for with contracted providers and free CScreen rating reports for Lackawanna County residents looking to make informed decisions when choosing an in-home care provider. It's a one-year agreement to commence September 1, 2023, and expires September 1, 2024, and to cost $16,795, adopted at the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September 6, 2023. Here once again is Director McDonald.
This is an annual service agreement that allows our agency to collect information on agencies that are providing in-home care and helps us evaluate them as far as their screening practices go. It helps us set a standard, so we're consistent, and we're not just making up our own reasons for, for going, entering into agreements with people. And then it also, we're required to do annual monitoring on our providers, and through their verification process, it allows us to, it, to do that and report it to the state. The state does not have a standard system, so this is a really big benefit to our agency.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Sarah? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 230224.
Authorizing the reassessment relief initiative, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the reassessment release, relief initiative on behalf of the Office of Assessment and Appeals in conjunction with Neighbor Works of Northeastern Pennsylvania to eligible residents of Lackawanna County, and applies to the increase in county taxes only once the final valuations are certified, adopted at a regulation, regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September 6, 2023. Here to speak upon that is our Assessments Director, Mr. Patrick Tobin.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The reassessment relief initiative is a program that was created largely by Commissioner Dominic in conjunction with Jesse Argot of Neighbor Works of Northeastern Pennsylvania. What we're offering to the taxpayers is upon the reassessment, if they are dealing with a county assessment which increases by 20% or more, the program offers them two years to pay that increase with no interest and penalties on that, the increase. So this will be implemented in January of 2026, and it would run through '26 and '27 tax years.
Now, I had, I spoke to Pat right outside the door a couple of minutes ago. One, I'm gonna put this, I'm gonna file a request to table it, and the reason being is one thing that we did not put in here, and we spent a lot of time on this. I mean, it's been passed around the world, we've addressed, we thought, every issue, but one thing we don't have- But one thing we don't have in here is, what we would do is if somebody meets all of the eligibility requirements, the amount of the increase would be levied against their home without interest and penalties for two years. And the reason behind it is basically to give people breathing room. You have to ask yourself, what can we do here? Reassessment is something we needed to do, and I'm proud of Jerry and I for moving forward and doing that. It hasn't been done in 55 years. That's 12 administrations that have overlooked the fact that we needed to reassess. But our priority is, obviously, we want to make sure that we protect the financial, financially vulnerable citizens, as well as our senior citizens. But we also have to protect those who may be overpaying more than, you know, what they should be. We have a duty to all residents. So the first question we ask ourselves is, what can we do? And we can't, you know, eliminate someone, the increase in taxes that someone may experience following reassessment in the event that that occurs, because it would be discriminatory if we did that for people who fall in a certain class and not for everybody. No one likes paying taxes. I think we can all agree on that one thing. So the whole purpose of the Reassessment Relief Initiative is basically to give people breathing room, so that when those tax bills come out in 2026, if their increase is, I think we have 20%.
Correct.
20% more, then they can just take that amount, not the entire amount. They have to continue paying what they were paying before, but that increase, it gives them some breathing room for them to figure out how they have to rebudget their household and their finances, not have to make the decision, can I buy my medication or pay my taxes this year? It will hopefully prevent people from not being able to pay their taxes altogether and become delinquent. So that's what it is. It's basically just allowing people some breathing room so that they can figure out what they need to do from a financial standpoint in their home, so that they can keep their home, be able to continue living, and ultimately be able to pay their new tax amount. I was going to initially just ask that we, I was going to move to have it approved with the caveat that I have to add in there the obligation of the court costs that are associated with levying a lien against a property, which I think, and don't quote me on this, but maybe $75, $100, I'm not sure. But I think it's best, just for purposes of efficiency and clarity, that we just table it today. Pat and I are going to meet after this meeting. We're going to add that to the, our program here as written. I already have it indicated where I want, or written where I want to have it indicated, and then hopefully we will be back on the 20th at our next board meeting, and we will formally approve it at that point.
Okay. So at this point, you're making a motion?
I'm making a motion to table, but I did want to answer what the purpose was behind it. Boris, you were interested, basically to give people who are financially vulnerable, whether they're senior citizens or not, time to just take a breath.
Emotions have been made until I have a second.
And get themselves together.
I'll second the table.
Well, thanks, Jerry. He just cuts me right off.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you have somewhere to be?
You made a motion.
I was in the middle of trying to answer Boris's question that he asked.
That's all you're doing. You're at a meeting. You want to talk to Boris, talk to Boris.
Thank you, Pat.
Good lord.
Thank you. Okay. Resolution 230228.
Approving the Recruitment and Retention Bonus for OIFs. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the Recruitment and Retention Bonus of the Office of Youth and Family Services.
We're a piece of work.
After receiving the approval of the Salary Board for Supervisory Administrative Employees and for members of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, as attached here to, adopted at the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and Mr. Kachory, I think you guys all asked your questions in the first meeting, so you can proceed now, or you can ask more if you want.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Other question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230225.
Appointments to the Board of Health. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby make the following appointments to the Lackawanna County Board of Health. Viti Ritu Karuna, MD 6, Country Club Place, South Abington Township, to term to begin immediately and expire on January 13, 2025. Peter A. Cognetti, MD 743, Jefferson Avenue, Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire on January 13, 2025. Adopted at the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September 6, 2023. Mr. Chairman.
Anybody have any questions on that? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion. There are two good additions.
Under what?
I said there are two good additions.
Oh. Sorry, I didn't hear you. I second that.
Okay. Other question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I'd like to make a motion, 230219.
The motion to award the 2023 Winter Market Tents to the LA Rentals 200 Whitehead Road, Hamilton, New Jersey, at a cost of $37,433.75. Here to speak upon and answer any of your questions is our Arts and Cultural Director, Ms. Maureen McGuigan.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
So, the Winter Market has been going on since 2013. In the past few years, it's been on Courthouse Square, which is its permanent home now, because we really love that. However, northeastern PA weathers can be challenging, so can't use our summer tents. So we've had to rent tents for the past few years. However, we did receive a local share account grant to build our own sustainable huts that we can use for years to come. So we're able to build 30 this year, and then we'll build the next 20 next year. So we do need to supplement tents this year, so that is why we are continuing to rent the tents for this year.
Yeah. You've changed the entire concept. We've changed the entire concept of the tent issue.
Yeah, I should explain there. We are calling them vendor huts, so they're collapsible, sustainable, wouldn't have, if you've ever been to Philly or Bryant Park in New York, they'll be very similar. So, you know, we think they're aesthetically nice, and they'll just make it a lot more sustainable and cost-effective.
Yeah, it's a great idea. It's very similar to, was it Bryant Park in New York?
Yeah, mini Bryant Park. Actually, that was the best compliment I got. I heard some guy on his cell phone say, "This is like mini Bryant Park."
Yeah, that's great. Okay, thank you. I made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Do you want to talk about your traffic control boxes while you're here?
Sure, that was a public art project that we just did. I'm really proud of this project. We had a great number of partners on it. We would never be able to do this without our partners, Scranton Tomorrow, the Historical Society, the LHVA helped fund it. We had two local businesses donate some in-kind services, Dan Semrell Advertising, and Center City Print. So what they are is if you walk around, there's 11 boxes, utility boxes, which you press the buttons, kind of mundane, and they were sort of, some of them had flyers stuck on them. So this idea was to make vinyl wraps with pictures of what would have been on that block, which is pretty cool. But there's also a QR code, so if you would like more information, there's some audio history on there. So it's just a way, it's very accessible for people to learn history and beautify the downtown.
Yep, they look nice.
Yeah, thank you. So we hope you check them out.
And vice chair, public comment.
Anybody, we're opening for public comment.
Morning, Debbie.
Good morning.
Hi, Chris Kelly, Scranton Times Tribune, for now.
Are they changing the name?
We're not aware of it. Hey, I don't know. I don't know. Strange days, Red. It was really tidy, the way you guys took care of the OIFs bonuses. I have a question. Are Bill and Carrie Browning getting these bonuses?
Bill is not. I don't know about Carrie, but I will check into it and get back to you.
That'd be great. Do you think that's appropriate, if she is?
If she's part of the management staff, yes.
Okay. She's the deputy director under Bill. So Bill for sure is not getting it.
She's not the deputy director. That's not her title.
That's.
It's administrative. It's got a different title to it, but I get where you're getting at. If she's part of that agreement, then yeah, she is.
So where's the money coming from, again?
The money is already budgeted because of all the empty positions from January.
Right. Which all happened under the Browning's watch, correct.
You can call, it's under our watch, to be quite honest with you.
Right. Okay. That's all I got. Thanks.
Joan Hodean, it's Scranton. I saw in the paper this morning, there's a senior fair at the marketplace at Steamtown this Friday from 11 to 2. Did you all see that? Something like 70 vendors, right? You guys read your own paper, don't you? I just wanted to, you know, to give a little advertisement to it. There are going to be 70 vendors there, and among other things, seniors can get a free flu shot. And this may be convenient for them, other than having to make a separate appointment with their doctors. My other thing is, this Reassessment Relief Initiative, even though it's tabled, have there been any discussions with the city and the school districts to move down the same path?
I was getting there until I was rudely cut off, but yes. Or no. The answer's no, but.
You're making a long story long.
Well, I'm sorry, but I figured I'd, it's on the agenda. People have it. They're going to ask questions. So rather than we have to get 45 phone calls from Mr. Kelly or Boris later, I'd rather just answer them now. So is that okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
Go right ahead.
But Joan, the answer is not yet. Once it's passed, and hopefully we'll be at the next meeting, then Mr. Tobin, and I told him I would have no problem accompanying him, and we're going to go talk to the, we can't mandate it, but we're going to hopefully, you know, hopefully convince them to try to implement, if not this, then something close to it.
Okay. But your initiative is not dependent upon them cooperating?
No.
Okay. And will the initiative ever address commercial properties for struggling businesses?
Leave it to you to give us something else to think about, but as of right now.
No, it's actually Maureen's idea.
Right now, let Pat note that, right now, it's only for residential properties, but we will discuss it afterwards, and I, we'll talk next, at the next meeting.
It's a start.
Hi, Jeff. How are you? Very well. Good morning, folks. It was a great weekend, this past weekend. Really enjoyed the LaFesta, and so, really enjoyed it. So listen, I'm doing my best Paul Revere here. Lockdowns are coming, folks. Lockdowns are coming, whether it's COVID or climate crisis. So what I did over the last few weeks is I created a document. Now, I went on YouTube to watch our commissioners take an oath to our Constitution of the United States. So I took the liberties to draw up an acknowledgement of our constitutional rights. Okay?
I'm sorry, what was, did he state his name?
This citizen, I took the time to watch a YouTube video. Did you hear me?
I just, I didn't, I didn't hear. Did you state your name?
William Torbeck. I'm in Lackawanna County.
Okay, I missed that part. Okay, I'm sorry. Can you continue?
My blood type, do you need that? No? Okay. So I took the liberties to draw up a document, which I had many citizens sign over the last week, a lot of young kids. And it's an acknowledgement of the constitution, of our constitutional rights, and how COVID mandates violated all of our civil liberties. I'll just point one out here. The Supreme Court specifically recognized that the existence of an emergency cannot change the protections afforded under our Constitution, a document which was created under grave conditions, as we all know, our history. So I'm going to ask that our commissioners, if I may approach, to take this document and sign it to show the citizens that you will defend our constitutional rights. You took an oath. I don't think you should have a problem signing this document and showing the citizens that you will defend our constitutional rights. May I approach with this document?
You can approach me with the document, and our legal team will look it over and then give it to the commissioners later.
You need the team to look over your constitutional rights?
Yeah, well.
I get it, I get it.
We don't know what you have written here.
Well, here, go right ahead and read it. You can read it out loud if you like.
I'm good with that right now. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I appreciate you looking at it. Thank you. And I think I got an extra for Mr. DeBilio here. Did I get that name right? DeBilio? Yes. And I'm not sure. I don't know. Your name? Paul? Say Paul. Okay. So I think it would be show a lot if you, if you signed this document, read this document and sign it before the sentence.
We won't sign anything until after we review. We will, we'll answer your question.
I can leave it, they'll read it. It's very simple. I thank you for your time.
Yep. Okay. Anybody else from the public? Boris?
Boris.
Chris?
I can't follow that.
Anybody else? Okay, nothing? All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioners, other business. Chris?
Well, I think he left, but want to thank Jim McHugh for coming in, our Navy veteran, and lead us in the pledge. That was very nice, so thank you for your service. And to also, Bill just mentioned, but LaFesta was a perfect weekend.
It was nice.
It was well-attended.
A little too hot.
A little toasty, but the food was great. The porketta sandwiches were off the charts once again at LaFest, or at Uenco Tent, but it was a great time, and I hope we didn't trample the grass too much on Courthouse Square, but it'll come back, so thank you.
Commissioner Dominic?
No.
No?
I've said everything I need to say right now.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I'm officially divorcing Jerry.
Motion.
He's what? Let me talk.
We got to adjourn. I made a motion. I made a motion.
I was trying to explain.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.